All right, at 7:00 PM as the president of the Board of Education, we're going to begin this regular meeting of the Board of Education, October 20th, 2025. We're going to ask everyone who can to please stand, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Mr. Whitford to please take role.
Dr. Alati.
Here.
Mr. Mazone.
Here.
Mr. Bagosian. Mr. Healy. Mrs. Jones. Dr. Racine. Mr. Spraberry. Mr. Conti. Mrs. Cole. You have a quorum.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside the borough clerk's office, mailed to the Herald, South Bergenite, and the Record newspapers, and filed with the borough clerk. Hard copies of the agenda are available in the meeting room, and the agenda is posted electronically on Friday before the meeting date on the district's website at www.rutherfordschools.org. Subsequent to the meeting, a video of the meeting will be uploaded to the district's website, The video link can be found by opening the Board of Education link and clicking on Public Meetings and then Videos. So Board members in your packets this evening, there were two sets of minutes to approve the regular meeting and executive session of September 29th, 2025. Any questions or comments on those? No? All right, then I'll ask Mr. Whitford to please enter those. And congratulations to all the parents here. You see now how we run a Board of Education meeting in the beginning. So this special presentation is actually part of our regular Board of Education meeting. It's probably one of the most exciting and proud moments for all of us as Board of Education members as we have the annual Board of Education Awards held this evening. And to kick us off, I am going to turn it over to our high school principal, Mr. Morano.
Thank you. Good evening. It is a true privilege to stand before you as we celebrate the outstanding accomplishments of our students. Tonight, we honor those who have earned the Board of Education Award, a recognition reserved for students who have achieved a GPA of 3.7 or higher and maintain no grade lower than a B minus. This distinction is more than a measure of academic success. It reflects perseverance, curiosity, and a deep commitment to excellence. Each of our recipients have shown that achievement is not defined by a single moment, but by consistent effort and unwavering desire to learn and grow. We also recognize the vital support system that makes this success possible, our teachers, families, and the entire Rutherford School community. Your guidance, encouragement, and belief in our students have been instrumental in helping them reach these milestones. I would also like to express my appreciation to Mr. Hurley, our superintendent of schools, Ms. Gagliardo, our director of guidance, and Mr. Whitford, our business administrator, for their continued leadership and support. Congratulations once again to our exceptional students, and thank you to the Board of Education for recognizing and celebrating their achievements as well as your commitment to the success of all the Rutherford students. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Director of Guidance, Ms. Jackie Gagliardo.
Thank you. Let's see if I can secure this here. There we go. Okay. I think I'm good. Okay. Hi, welcome everyone. All right, we are going to get started with recognizing our very deserving students. We're going to start the night with the Bronze Award. The Bronze Award is presented to students who achieve a 3.7 or higher grade point average for one academic year. This award will be presented by our principal, Mr. Frank Morano. We ask that you kindly hold your applause till all of the names have been called. At this time, I'll ask that the students walk up the stage and just wait for your name to be called. Aiden Abadilla. Elena Abadilla. Giovanna Aludo. Thomas Barnes. Avery Benami. Isabella Bianco. Ally Bordoli. Maeve Brennan. Samantha Bush. Brody Cardinelli. Evelyn Chen. Madison Daly. Allison Diaz. Brooke Demiola. Erin Doyle. Kelly Dudonis. Antonella Felix. Dylan Gagliardo. Leah Gambali. Maximus Gastalou. Mia George. Fady Goddess. Salvatore Guadishon. Jackson Harris. Charlotte Henderson. Jill Kakadia. Arnav Kesarvani. Zoheb Khan. Jiwan Kim. John Kozlik. Angelina Liller. Mark Lopes. Brooke MacArthur. Samuel Mariscow. Adriana Marks. John Marks. Braden McQuade. Carlson Metzger. Sarah Narvays. Mahin Navadia. Mackenzie Nimmo. Fiona Parkinson. San Kulp Padalia. James Pusso. Daniela Rodriguez. Nicholas Rodriguez. Tavani Rockham. Vara Salian. Daniel Sek. Philip Sell. Drew Sheta. Rita Shaiju. Raphael Sitarz. Madison Smith. Madeline Sullivan. Livia Tarantino McCarthy. Lucas Tetcha. Madison Triana. Emma Tucino. Kai Tung. Victoria Twist. Shloke Vagasia. Bailey Vega. Brandon Vega. Valerie Weiss. Brandon Wong. Homa Zerzada. And Arjivam Zalavadia. All right, we're moving on. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, the next award is going to be the Silver Award. The Silver Award is presented to students who achieve 3.7 or higher grade point average for two academic years. This award will be presented by our Board of Ed President, Dr. Sergio Alati. We again ask that you hold your applause until all names have been read. Benjamin Almingore. Ryan Beek. Elizabeth Bardzo. Mariah Beato. Mark Bershadsky. Charles Bohan. Jamie Boliger. Jaden Cabrera. Andrew Calvo. Tyler Carroll. Zoe Casal. Brian Case. Donovan Charles. Sophia Klossy. Leo Cohn. Alexandra Corwin. Michaela Cosenzio. Panav Desai. Deborah Dobrevoda. Andrew Erickson. Bailey Federick. Lila Greiner. Emily Griffin. Leah Griffin. Eva Herworth. Majad Atani. Malik Atani. Graham Jordan. Landon Kemble. Sophia Lafler. Peyton Lewis. Howlin Lee. Sebastian Lorza. Lucia Marchisani. Grace Meth. Ariana Nelson. Anthony Nunziato. Andrew Ahoyski. Elif Orhan. Nina Peolazi. Kaido Pepito. Jase-- I'm sorry, Joseph Philp. Adriana Pizza. Vivian Skirbo. Samantha Serrano. Mahi Shah. Leah Shin. Juliet Singh. Alexander Sitarz. Russell Snyder. Molly Sullivan. Tess Sullivan. Chloe Tarifi. Alex Tatarov. Karen Tortora. Kami Yusan. Ava Velez. Franklin Weiss. Lorelei White. And Ryan Witt. Does not look like he's here. Okay. We are moving along. Thank you. We are now moving on to the Gold Award. The Gold Award is presented to students who achieve a 3.7 or higher grade point average for three academic years. This award will be presented by our superintendent, Mr. Jack Hurley. We ask that you hold your applause until all names have been read. Serena Alves. Ariana Amonte. Janina Barna. Hannah Bobowitz. Christopher Burns. Andrew Choi. Matthew Chu. David Correa. Tessa Davidson. Danielle Delatorre. Vincent Di Nunzio. Kate Finan. Rena Forte. Jasmine Gadia. Eva Hernandez. Sarah Iorio. Samuel Kuderna. Ben Liu. Chase Maloney. Serene Millian. Kate Metzger. Hannah Nisha Kawara. Nina Olivo. GT Pakovic. Lena Powell. Umar Patel. Leonardo Saraseni. Natalie Turner. Katherine Valencia. Mackenzie Velas. Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Morano will be awarding our certificate awardees. I'll kindly ask that those students seated in the front walk over to the stairs to receive those certificates. VIP seating for them. All right. I'm going to start with the National Merit Scholarship Program Commended Students. This is in recognition of outstanding ability and potential for academic success in college. Our first awardee is Christopher Burns. Next is Samuel Kuderna. Ben Liu. And Umar Patel. The next set of awards is from the University of Rochester. We'll start with our Baush and Loem Honorary Science Award in recognition of outstanding achievement and superior intellectual promise in the field of science. Our awardee is Danielle Delatorre. Our next award is the Frederick Douglass and Susan B. Anthony Award from University of Rochester in recognition of outstanding commitment to social justice and dedication to continuing their unfinished life's work. Christopher Burns. Oh, he ran away. Come on down. Price is Right. Our next award is the Xerox Award from the University of Rochester. This is for innovation and information technology in recognition of outstanding achievement in the pursuit of innovative approaches and an appreciation for the possibilities of technology. This award goes to Kate Metzger. And our last award from the University of Rochester is the George Eastman Young Leaders Award. This is in recognition of outstanding academic achievement and leadership. This award goes to Ava Hernandez. Our next award is the Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Rensselaer Award, in recognition of superlative academic achievement of young men and women and to motivate students toward careers in science, engineering, and technology. This award goes to Brian Case. And our last certificate awards are from the Rochester Institute of Technology in recognition of leadership, service, and achievement. Our first awardee is for computing, and it goes to Samuel Kuderna. Sorry. I got you. He's fast. The next award from RIT is Business and Leadership. And this award goes to Hannah Nisha Kawara. Our next award from RIT is the Science and Math Award. And this goes to Matthew Chu. Our next award is for Art and Design. And this goes to Serene Millian. Our next award is for Humanities and Social Sciences. And this goes to Natalie Turner. I want to congratulate all of our awardees for all of their amazing work. I also want to thank our guidance department for being here tonight to support our students and help organize this event. And I think I will turn it over to-- yeah, you're closing. All right.
Yes, let's have one more round of applause for our students. Congratulations to all the parents. I know everyone's going to be in a rush to get down to the board meeting, so I will turn it over to Dr. Alati to close us down.
All right, so all of your children practiced for graduation by doing right-hand shake, left-hand take. They just didn't know it. No, listen, parents, my kids graduated in 2024. James, my daughter Jewel's graduated in 2021. We spend a lot of our time being problem solvers and caretakers and worried about our kids. But moments like this are also really important where we get to celebrate all the wonderful accomplishments of your children because they didn't just get these awards for no reason. They worked hard, and they deserve to be recognized. So on behalf of the Rutherford Board of Education, we congratulate you, congratulate your children, keep them on the path. Just as the schools are, you have a role in partnership. And like Mr. Morano said, if you'd like to join us in the cafeteria for the rest of the Board of Education meeting, it'll be great. We'll take a photo if we have people in the audience. But anyway, thank you for coming this evening. We're going to take a five-minute break, reconvene. Have a good evening. All right, break's over. Snap your fingers, and we're here in the cafeteria. So we're going to move on now to the report of the superintendent. Over to you, Ms. Hurley.
Thank you. The student rep tonight, she received an award, so she's not here to present. But she gets a night off. It's part of getting her award. I have a short report, just a couple of things to go over with you. We are in the process of going through the results of the survey that went out. Just give you a kind of a snapshot. We had 524 respondents, which, you know, when you hear 524, it doesn't sound like a lot. That was about 20%. And the company that we're working with said that if you get between 12 and 15%, you're doing really well. So 20% is a very healthy turnout. The-- most of the comments and most of the categories scored very high. There were some areas where, you know, that we would expect to hear some suggestions for. Communication always is something that ranks big. Some different academic supports, which again, always is something that's on somebody's mind. So where they may have ranked highly, there were also comments that, you know, indicated some concerns or some questions. Also some consistencies across platforms that we use to communicate, that we use to engage with parents across the schools and across the district. There was strong support for Parent Academy. There was strong support for Profile the Graduate. There was also some concerns raised on the elementary level primarily with maybe the overuse of technology. You know, the pendulum goes one way, and then it starts coming back the other way, right? So, you know. So what we're doing now is we're kind of diving into the detail, the detailed analysis that we got from the company. I will be sending to you all sometime in the next week or so a summary with a little more detail and also some of the things that we are currently doing even prior to the survey and that we're going to do because of the survey to dig a little deeper into some of these areas and come up with a response. So maybe by the end of the week, early next week, I'll send you a two- or three-page summary. And then at our next meeting, talk about it a little more thoroughly based on the report you get. The same report that I will be sharing with you, I will share with the community, the school community, whether that be through Connect5 message or whether it be on the website, or both. So everything that you'll get, they'll get as well. Okay? So looking forward to talking a little bit more about that, okay? As we go down the road. Okay? And we're also in the process now of putting together a survey for faculty. And we're also going to be working on a survey with staff. And that would focus on climate, but really more on curriculum initiatives and things that we're doing to get some feedback. Okay? Another topic I want to mention is that Ms. Yoda, who is our supervisor of social studies and also world language, has joined the New Jersey 250 Revolution, which is a statewide initiative to celebrate the 250th anniversary of, you know, the Constitution in the United States. And it's going to go on for a three-year period. And we have Mr. Vanderhoof, who's a teacher at the high school, Mr. Brahini, who's a teacher at Union Middle School, and Mr. Bach, who's a teacher at Pierpon School, are all taking part in the initiative. And what that really means is that over the course of the next three years, but primarily focused on the next year, they'll be sharing activities they're doing with their students. They'll be in a consortium with schools from across the state to see some of the activities they're doing. And the activity is really focusing more on local and state history, local and state government, civic engagement, things like that. So I'm pleased that, you know, I shared this with Ms. Yoda and said, I think it might be a great thing, you know, it's a voluntary thing, but a great thing to get involved in. So we have some of our teachers and students getting involved in. Okay? And obviously, some of the things that these three teachers will be highlighting and uploading to this statewide shared document are things that our other classes are doing as well. You know, it's not just an isolated incident. Okay? A reminder that schools will be closed for students on the Election Day, November 4th, and then on Teachers Convention, November 6th and 7th. We will be looking at committee meeting, at least for personnel, on the night of the 27th, I believe it is, of November. It's that Monday, I think it is, the 27th. And maybe we might also, we'll see where things are at with building of grounds and other things, whether we need a meeting. But the Personnel Committee will be looking at, I'm going to be sending you a voluminous attachment of job descriptions, okay? And, you know, we'll go through them. I mean, there won't be lots and lots of details we have to dig into, but we've basically updated all of them, and we're going to get a mass approval at a future board meeting because some just haven't been touched for a while and, you know, some subtle changes and also some not-so-subtle changes that have been made. So that's primarily why Personnel will be meeting at the end of the month. I also, you know, as I said in my message, it went out in the packet, this is the time of year where we start with plays in November. We'll actually have a meeting before the play, but the importance of being earnest, glad to see Alskewild making a comeback. Also, the state tournaments for various sports, you know, will be ongoing for the teams that have qualified. So that is an ongoing process if you want to check the calendar, the calendar for that. And I am honored to get a chance to go to, at least I think so, honored to get a chance to go to Washington, D.C. over the weekend of Teachers Convention, is just coincidental as one of the 50 state winners from last year. There's a forum. I haven't gotten the agenda yet, so I don't know exactly what the topics will be, but it's basically a think tank, I guess, of sharing discussion with the other superintendents from around the country. So I'm looking forward to that. That, I think, is my last official act before I have to hand over the baton to whoever the new one is, okay? And he'll be calling me about, what's that thing like in Washington, and what do you have to do with the national, and all that kind of stuff. But yeah, I'm looking forward to that. And again, I'm always very proud that I could, you know, be somewhere where I'm introduced as Rutherford, you know, so that gets out there. So that's it for my report.
All right. Thank you. Questions from board members? Ms. Jones.
I just want to congratulate Jack for a wonderful year and how proud we are of you of being our Superintendent of the Year. It was a great honor. And I'm so glad last year that we got to hear you speak. You did such a beautiful job. Are they doing it this year too?
Yes. Tomorrow, they'll be announcing the regional winners. Yeah.
And the northern region?
Northern region is Ray Gonzalez, I believe. He used to be at Westwood, now he's at Westfield.
Well, congratulations again.
Yeah, good guy. Right.
Awesome. Other questions or comments from board members? All right. Hearing none, we're going to move on to the report of the president. Just a couple of quick things. Thank you to those who could come to the homecoming parade to March. I think it was great. Beautiful day. There were some graduating classes there as well, so just a nice day to be together and to be out there in the community. Reminder that the Rutherford Education Foundation, that does a lot to support teacher grants and school grants, is having their signature event, Casino Night, at the Westmount Country Club on November 21st. If you're interested in tickets, feel free to reach out to me, Christina. We're RAF members. And, you know, we want the Chair of the Casino Night to be happy, so hopefully you'll be able to come to that. And otherwise, there were a couple of things in Mr. Early's memo to note. Personnel Committee meeting looks like will be Monday, November 24th.
I was wrong on the date. Yes, I said the 20th. Thank you. I had the wrong date. So this is the 24th.
This is the right date.
That's the right date.
Okay. Got it. And I think that's about it. Any questions or comments for me? All right. Hearing none. Then at 7:39 PM, we are going to open up the meeting to the public for anything related to the agenda this evening. All right. Hearing no comments, we're going to close the meeting at 7:40 PM, and we are going to turn now to new business where there is action to be taken, and we will start with Personnel. Mrs. Cole.
Good evening. Personnel did not meet this month. We're still doing consent agendas, so I would like to move the following motions, number one through 13, at the recommendation of the Superintendent under Personnel.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second on that? All right. Mr. Conti, any questions or comments on any of the Personnel items? No, seeing none. All right. Then I'll ask Mr. Whitford to please take role.
Mr. Bogosian.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Mazone.
Yes.
Dr. Racine.
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry.
Yes.
Dr. Alati.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We'll move on now to curriculum and instruction. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. The curriculum instruction did not have a meeting since our last board meeting, and tonight there are nine motions put forth upon the recommendation of our Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. We have a second. Putting those over. Mr. Spraberry, any questions or comments about curriculum and instruction? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Mazone.
Yes.
Dr. Racine.
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry.
Yes.
Dr. Alati.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We'll move on now to finance. Mr. Bogosian.
We have not had a Finance Committee meeting since our last full board meeting. Tonight on the agenda, we have three motions to consider. I'd like to move motions one through three under Finance.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Mrs. Cole, questions or comments about anything related to finance? All right. Hearing no comments, Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Mazone.
Yes.
Dr. Racine.
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry.
Yes.
Dr. Alati.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to policy. Mr. Healy, anything for us?
We did not have a committee meeting since our last board meeting, and there are no resolutions for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on now to buildings and grounds. Mr. Spraberry.
Yes, we have one motion put forth by the Superintendent. I'd like to recommend for approval.
All right. We have a second on that one. Mr. Mazone, questions or comments? Mr. Spraberry.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Whitford and Mr. Early for putting together a very comprehensive maintenance plan. It takes all the effort and energy to keep our buildings up and running with the budgets that we have. So phenomenal job. Looks to have a great, great job. So proud of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Mazone.
Yes.
Dr. Racine.
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry.
Yes.
Dr. Alati.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on now to old business. Any old business? We'll start with Mr. Healy and then Ms. Jones.
Yes. I did attend the Pierpont PTA meeting on October 15th, and the PTA Council and Parents passed the budget for this school year, and they just reviewed an amazing amount of activities planned for the fall and holiday season. See, it was a very good meeting. Thanks.
Good. Ms. Jones.
I was thrilled to go see the football games on Friday night. We played Woodbridge, an undefeated team, and that was a real tight game. It was wonderful. Graham Jordan, Sally Jordan's son, was the hero again, kicking the point after the touchdown. The Giants should have had him.
Yeah, I was going to say. Did you have to bring that up right now?
The other thing that happened this weekend was a tribute to Sally Labera's dad at Felician College. Christina and her husband and her son were there, and Chris and his, Kim and his two boys, Charlie and Cooper, were there. I attended. It was lovely. They toast them warm and delightful stories. I think the one that I really thought was funny, his oldest daughter, or their oldest daughter, is an attorney, and when she was a teenager, she had a big heartbreak and was really not doing well handling it. So she went to her father for advice, and he said, "Mow the lawn." So she said, "That's it." He's a big fan of Rutt's Hut, but they did a lovely job with it. It was very nice.
Nice. Thank you. Mr. Spraberry.
I'd like to just go on to embarrass my son, who was here for his Eagles Cup project tonight, so congratulations on that. Also, we attended the head of the Charles, the biggest regret in the world, and our local club, Rutherford, and one of our local students here, finished fourth in the...
Oh, wow.
So we had three out of five votes finish in the top four, and then I'll find, finish in the top 10.
That's wonderful.
Awesome. Congratulations.
All right. Any other old business?
Me.
Ms. Cole.
I had the honor of attending the high school PTA last week, and I was just wondering, Mr. Healy, how many parents were at the Lincoln School PTA meeting?
Pierpont.
Oh, Pierpont.
Pierpont. I'd say about 15 to 16, you know, that range.
See, what happens is that during PTAs in the high school level, it starts to fizzle out a lot, and I think it was myself and three other parents. So I would just like to say, you know, have the public come out and support the high school PTA or high school PTA volunteers. They do an incredible job, you know, welcoming teachers and supporting the students, and I know they work really hard throughout the school year. It's a very big role to have in the high school, to be the PTA President and Board. So just come out and support it because I know when your kids get to high school, you've had so many years of PTA meetings, you kind of fizzle out, but they do need your support. So I just want to, you know, put that out there and have parents, you know, please support your PTA. Mr. Morano gave out really great information for us, but there was only three of us to receive it. But I think that if you come to the PTA meetings in the high school, you will see what the high school is about. You had the opportunity to talk to administrators where you might not have at something like you were attending today. So he does give you a lot of time to talk to him, Mr. Morano and Mr. De Vary. The student representative is there as well.
And faculty representative.
And the faculty representative. So if you're looking for information, high school PTA meetings is the way to go.
Yeah. If I can piggyback, I had a conversation with Mr. Morano after the meeting because he was a little, you know, usually the first one, too. You get more people. And, you know, I think over the years, you know, being a high school principal, yeah, the numbers do decline from what you get in elementary and middle school, but they were always healthier than they've been. I know people are very busy. I think the misconception, and I used to have this conversation when I was principal, is that, you know, the PTA is not maybe as involved in, you know, being the classroom parent anymore or, you know, going on the field trips or the things like that. But the involvement, you know, in terms of supporting teachers, supporting kids, the big thing of the scholarships that come out for kids and, you know, in today's economy, every little bit helps when kids go forward. So, yeah, I mean, anything that we could do, and I said to Mr. Morano, you know, anything he could think of to try to encourage, you know, more folks to be involved. And, you know, it may be something that I'll bring up in the next administrators' meeting with the middle school and probably Pierpont because the younger ones, you know, there's too many years in between. But maybe talk to those PTAs about, you know, staying involved, you know? If you've been active at Union, stay active at the high school, you know, that kind of thing. But, yeah, I do think it's something we should address because it's a very important part of our school. Very important part.
Agreed.
And thanks for bringing that up because...
That's a great point.
Other old business? All right. Seeing none.
Can I mention one thing? You mentioned Dr. Labera. I believe today, Elm Street over by Wood, Wood and Elm, in that area, they named a par of that street after Reverend Frazier today. There was a dedication to that, and, you know, we spoke about his passing in the summer, I think, when he passed. So that's a nice honor for Reverend Frazier, who's, like I said, former councilperson and a key figure in Rutherford for many, many, many years, so.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to legislative update. Ms. Jones.
One bill, Senate Bill 4589, introduced June 5th, 2025. Sponsored by John J. Borashetti, Districts 3 and Cumberland, and Paul D. Marotti, District 4, Atlantic and Canada. Requires child in home education program and parents to meet annually with representative of the resident school district who is designated by the Superintendent of Schools. The person designated shall be a school counselor, school nurse, or school social worker. The purpose of the meeting is for the parent or guardian to have the opportunity to required support from the school district for the home education program and for the person designated by the Superintendent to conduct a general health and wellness check of the students. Had they not any checkups?
Is this homeschool? No. And that's been introduced, right? It hasn't moved. So we'll see what happens with that. But in theory, under law, and we had this discussion over some other topics that came up, if you homeschool your child, you are essentially withdrawing them from the school district, and the transfer card doesn't say a private school, it says homeschool. So technically, it's not the district's responsibility. Now, there's a philosophical discussion about whether it should be or not, but in terms of...
Quite unattained.
Yeah. But a lot of these bills that get, you know, introduced, they get introduced, and then we have to track where they go.
All right. Thank you.
And I will be, I guess I'm doing the tours of capitals. I'll be in Trenton on November 12th. I feel like I'm doing a Vegas act or something.